Convene this special meeting. And at this time, I'm going to ask to have our invitation complete that we go to our co-chair.
Father God, would you leave us some word? That's far ahead. Most holy and almighty God, we truly thank you for this day. Now, Father God, we need your direction, your wisdom, your knowledge. I thank you for each one here. Thank you for what they do, Lord, because we can do nothing without you, but we can do all things through Christ which strengthened us. We ask you now, Lord, as you bless this meeting, that we come out better than what we came in. And then give us that truly direction, Lord, to light our pathway, to show us which way we should go. I thank you for all you have done and all you're going to do, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I ask you in the first place, be rejoiced, blessed with your blessings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think there's anything much to prove the agenda, so.
Second.
Much to say, all in favor? What I'm so curious. Does everyone have a copy of the agenda? We think everybody's good, everybody's comfortable and ready to go. All right, get ready for the enjoy this afternoon. Ms. Wanda, I see you are first. So without slurring up, we'll get you started. It's on you.
Thank you.
Good man.
Thanks for allowing us to be all these present this afternoon. We're going to try to fill you in on health department services, what we provide and that kind of thing. So that I think most people know me here today. If you don't, I'm Wanda Robinson, I'm the health director. I have with me Tamara Jones, and Tamara is our accounting specialist. She's the one that takes care of all the money and keeps everybody's insurance. So she is here with me today. So we're going to jump right in. Today, we're going to do an overview of health department services, looking at their governance. We're going to talk about health department services in general. We're going to do a financial, a little bit of financial overview and get other information that we think that you may want to listen to or hear. So as in always, our mission statement is to preserve, protect, and promote the health environment and well-being of citizens. And we're looking from our clinical services to environmental health, to health promotion. So we have a broad way of rate of services. We provide services, prevent adverse outcomes, and promote efforts to improve the quality of life for residents of Sampson County. We were consolidated in January of 2018, and what that means is where I used to have our Board of Health, we consolidated and the county commissioners are some control of the health department. So now, I have an advisory board that was appointed with 11 members, and those members were appointed by general statute. I have to have certain members on there, such as doctor, nurses, engineer, a dentist, pharmacist, so it's a broad array. There are 11 members that must be on that board. And the county manager and the county attorney are non-voted members, they attend our meetings. And then the members are appointed and can serve up to three, three-year terms. Most of the time, it takes about three years to get to know what you need to know about public health. So, but that's our term limits, that they are appointed by you, and they do serve those terms. And my advisory board is there. We discuss any issues that we're having, and then once those issues are discussed, and we make recommendations to the county commander, county manager, and then to the county commissioners. So each month, you all, the board, you will see at the bottom of each program, information from the Board of Health. And that's why we submit to you that even though I haven't advisory board, you are really my board. Health Department, there's 44 members. A lot of folks don't know, but we have nurses, nurse practitioners, laboratory technicians, interpreters. We have multiple interpreters, and when we hire, we try to hire folks that are bilingual so that we can kind of cover the advisory services that we provide. Social worker, case managers, nutritionists, I have two nutritionists in the health department, environmental health specialists, and health educators. I also, by general statute, have to have a medical director and a pharmacist on staff. We have an in-house pharmacy where we distribute things such as TB medicines, family planning medicines, things for maternal health patients, and we do have to have those folks on staff. Health Department services. So kind of walk through a few of them. God, I don't know if I say it sometimes, I kind of walk around people. But the first one, the ones with the stars, we're going to talk about in a minute, but I want to talk about the ones that don't have stars beside them. The ones that have the stars are mandated programs. We get files from the federal government and the state who provide these services, such as child health. We provide health services for children zero to 21 years of age. We provide their exams, laboratory work, immunizations, and make referrals. My practitioners can treat also. Communicative disease and TB is a big one for us. As you all may not be aware of, we do have pertussis now going around Sampson County. We've had some in the schools and in the daycare. So that's why public health come into play. We are that group of people that go out into the school and investigate those cases and tell folks what they need to do so that we can stop the spread of disease and keep our folks healthy. Family planning services. We have a large clinic where we provide physical exams for women. I use a childbearing women, they can get birth control, get physical exams, or whatever through us. Immunizations, you all know, we give all immunizations. DTP, polio, MMR, there are Sela. We give immunizations to not only children, but people in the community that desire them. Laboratory work, laboratory, we have a full laboratory. Not only do we do lab services in-house, we send out some of our labs also, because if we have provided services that we need to provide, we have to be able to provide those diagnoses. Public health, maternal health, this is a large thing for us, and it is mandated in that we provide services to those indigent folks in our county, those that don't have Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever. We will provide other services, but this is mostly for the indigent. We see we have probably about 100 pregnant ladies right now in our, under our services. And last year, we provided about over 1,400 visits came through the health department. And what's important about our maternal health clinic is that we only have one OB-GYN in this county. You think about it, one OB-GYN. So when our last doctor left, we made an agreement with the hospital that we would provide care, and once they get to a certain point, we will refer over to Sampson Medical Clinic, Sampson Clinic. And we do deliver our people here in Sampson County. That's very important, because we want to make sure that we keep our hospital open and going. So we do have an agreement with them that we will deliver here, they will deliver to hospital, and those services are taken care of. So very important. Public health preparedness, we want to make sure that we are able to provide and be prepared in event of some kind of emergency, be it a disease or whatever. We want to make sure public health does have that small piece in there, or we are able to respond. What else? STDs, HIVs, everybody know what that is. Whether you believe it or not, that's one of our highest clinics in our building. We have a lot of work to do, and we're trying to do that, but a lot of work to do, a lot of team pregnancy as a result of STDs and that kind of thing, HIV. You don't hear a lot about it, but it is here in Sampson County. Vital records, we do, we see all the births and death certificates, they come through us, and then we send them over to, to, what's?
Registered.
Registered. So moving right along, we have 21 programs, each with different mandates. Those programs, each one of them come with agreements from the state. We have guidelines that we have to follow to make sure we're doing what we have to do. We are probably one of the most, we're back.
Go back.
Yeah. 15,000 services with 26,984 PAC clients, environmental health, just an overview of what kind of services we offer, our numbers. No county contributions. These are my programs that we provide with funding from other places. Adult health, we have that clinic that's completely funded by fees that we collect or whatever. We only have that there because in some of my programs, like I can't put a child in the family planning clinic, I can't put someone that's not a childbearing age in my family planning clinic, you got to be pregnant to be in the maternal health clinic. So there are guidelines and things that we have to go by. So when it comes to the adult health, those are people that we've had in our clinic, we've got to put them somewhere to provide follow-up if we need to do that. BSAW, wise women, you've heard of BSAW, that's a program offered by the state, we get funding for that. We also get funding from United Way. They love us. It's a good program, it's for totally indigent, these are people that don't have insurance or anything. Semhar and Simar, it looks like French, but this is case management for high-risk pregnant women and high-risk children. We do provide those services, I have nurses and social workers doing that. This is, this program is totally federally funded. My staff see, it's a large clinic now, it's based with the new Medicaid managed care. Diabetes self-management, we'll help you manage your diabetes. Public health preparedness, Rural Health Grant. School nursing, use that one, school nursing. So we do have a subcontract with the schools, and we subcontract with them, and they agree that when we subcontract with them, that they will provide their nursing staff to help us when we get to disaster mode. So that gives us a few more nurses when we go into shelters and that kind of thing. Because there are so few of the nurses that we just, and we have to rotate them in and out, that kind of thing. WIC, a lot of people think, oh, God, WIC is social services. No, WIC is not in social services. Just want to make sure, it is not in social services. It is a program where our clients, county residents do get vouchers, not vouchers, they actually have a card now that they can get their WIC vouchers. But they come through, there is a medical nutrition piece where they have to talk with our nutritionist, they have to, there have to be a medical reason to do so. And then they get certain items based on those assessments, and when they come through the health department. So it is located in the health department, not in social services. Not that's a bad thing, but it is located in the health department. So this is just some of our services, numbers and that kind of thing, put them on a scale. Looking at WIC again, whether you believe it or not, looking at that number, WIC brings in a bunch of money to Sampson County, because they have vouchers that's given to them from the state, and they're using our place here in Sampson County. So they do bring in millions to our county. So just FYI with that. Who do we serve? You can see our race, racial makeup, we have 28% black, 71% white. Insurance, 23%, Medicaid, 25%, uninsured, 52%. This is who we serve in the health department. Ethnicity, Hispanic, Latino, 48%, non-Hispanic, Latino, 52%, and then male and female. So as you can see, looking at our numbers of whom we serve, you can see that there may be issues with what we do and how we do it, and that we try to serve those that who would otherwise not have access to care. Tamara's going to talk to us.
For the financial piece, our fees are determined and set based on, we look at what fees are around in neighboring counties, in different areas, so that we try to stay within the same realm. We also use what it actually cost us to provide some of those services and some specific items as the actual cost of those, such as the vaccines, or vitamins, or aspirin for the maternal health patients. Our fees are recommended by the advisory board and approved by the Board of Health annually. We do bring fees monthly if needed, if there's any kind of changes or any additions. We operate, when she was talking about the uninsured, they operate on a sliding fee scale. And what that means is, it's based on the 101 to 250% poverty level. So a family of four that has an income of $32,000 to $44,000 would fall in the 20% bracket. So that means if our fee for whatever they had done that day was $100, they would only pay 20. It's based on the household income and the household size.
And that is significant in that we can say, we're going to see X amount of clients. But if you have 30, 40%, it's going to slide down to 20 or to zero. That means that, you know, that's always been difficult for me, working in public health, is how you, you know, you just have to take that into mind. And, you know, we tried to work with that, but that is very important for us.
Yeah, because we never know when the patient walks in, what their family makeup's going to be, and they may be 20% this time, and then they may come back, and they may be 40%, or now they may be zero, they may have lost their job. We do require proof of income for our services, so they do have to bring something, a W-2 bank statement, a check stub, something, except for family planning and BSAW. We can't take verbal for those programs, but those are the only two. Immunizations do not slide, so if they come in and get a private vaccine, if they don't qualify for state, they do have to pay for that out of pocket at full price. We also are dealing with Medicaid managed care. Back in January of '24, we were billing Medicaid for services that were provided. When Medicaid managed care came in, we started having to bill Medicaid, WellCare, Health People who Carolina Complete, AmeriHealth Care TOS, United Health Community Care, and in January of '25, North Carolina Trillium joint. So instead of billing one payer for these services, now we're billing seven different payers for the same sources. And they have different criteria. Most of them are the same as far as the Medicaid, but some of them require little different nuances or a little different modifier. And that's in addition to our private insurance, so Blue Cross Blue Shield, United Healthcare, Cigna. We're in network with most insurance companies. There's a few we might not be in network with, but once they come in, we know that they're, it's somebody that continues to come. I do try to get in network with them, so we do get the highest amount payment for those services. We do operate on the spend down. We try to, I pull from the state and federal government each month based on our expenditures. So we use federal money first, state money, then our third-party billers, patient fees, and county contributions. This is just a graph showing for '23, '24, because that's the last full fiscal year that we've had. 39% of our revenue sourced were state and federal revenues, 5% were local fees, and that's where people actually pay for their services. 15% was Medicaid, 4% was insurance, and it's got zero for grants and miscellaneous, that was under 1%. So that's why it popped up as zero. 9% would be health department fund balance and 29% county contribution. And this just shows you the same thing, the graph, we've got a bar graph and a pie graph.
So everybody, mental health services. Just want to talk a bit about them. This is mandated by the state also. We do try to include as many fees as we can, but this program is totally mandated by the state. And these are the services that we must provide under environmental health services. We have over 22 or more rules. We are, environmental health is the most regulated program that probably is in this county. There are things, guidelines that they have to go by to do what they do, and on a daily basis, that's the way they function. We have food and lodging, I'm sure everybody knows, may or may not, but our guys are in all the grocery stores, they're in the restaurants, they're in the motels, they're in the schools, they, and the restaurants, I think there's over 150 restaurants here in this county now. And they have to make, not just one visit, but some are twice a year, and some are three or four times a year. So they are very, and you think about how large this county is with them going from one end of the county to the other. On-site wastewater, that's probably everybody knows, environment, and you're going out of tanks, water, and those kinds of things. Private drinking well, water wells that they're doing, swimming pools, tattoo parlors. I think we do have a tattoo parlor here now, I think. So they have to make sure those are in. Childcare, school sanitation, concession stands, we also have a mandate to do those. Lead is something that has come the last two or three years that we traditionally did not have to work with, but now guidelines have come down that we will have to do lead testing in all the daycares, at least once every year. We're getting lead cases, something that we did not used to get at one point, but we are having lead cases here now. We have one in one of our schools. And when you're talking about lead case in a school, you have to think about how do you take care of this, and because kids and lead and the medical issues that it can cause can be very significant. So we do have to go in, eradicate that issue, and move on. Solid waste, we are involved in solid waste a little bit, in that my guys do go out and do some things in the county. And migrant labor camp inspections, we have over, can't remember how many migrant camps we have, over 100? But we have one of the largest amounts in the state of North Carolina. And so January through probably this time of year, you're out busy, trying to get the camps, water samples and inspections, to make sure that we're going to be ready for when the season starts with our laborers coming in. Food and lodging inspections, this is just a real, real broad overview, and you can see how services have increased since 2020, including lodging, and then septic tanks, which is going to be a bit more, I think, in '25, because we saw really a growth in Sampson County. You know, if every house is filled out in the county, environmental health is going to be out there. Investigations, we put 10, but it's much, much more than that. Those are actual cases, and we want to see that at zero, but it is at 10. Other health department programs I just want to mention is opioid settlement funds. We started receiving our funds in '22, '23. We're currently working on plans to use those funds. Some of you may have seen on some of our meetings. We are getting ready to have, start looking at how we can access those funds and use them here in our county, because we do have one of the highest rates of opioid overdose. And not only us, but looking at some of our other hospitals, EMS, it is a big issue for us, and we want to try to look at how we can cut those rates down with our folks here in the county. And you can see what our current, the amounts that we've received, and I've also put 25, 26, so we've got it there, but we're going to be very conservative how we're going to use this funding. And remember, it can only be used for opioid-related issues, period, cannot be used for anything else that's not the opioid related. And I did put solid waste, but I've told you about that, things, something, things that they do. Things that, few successes we just wanted to mention, you don't have to have a prescription now for Narcan. We receive United grant funds from BSAW. Environmental Health has rolled out some software to make them a bit more efficient, and is working better now that we are computerized. We've extended one of our clinics to increase access so that folks can get in afterward or whatever. TB program is big here, believe it or not. We've got several cases that we're working on, and you all want us to make sure that we take care of those. That's one of those services that we want to make sure that all, that we can make sure that we've eradicated, because TB is no joke. And it's county residents that we're having to deal with. And you think, you've got a TB case, and if I was to come down and become positive, all you sitting around here today, you would have to be tested or whatever to make sure that you're not a case. So it's not, it's not very simple, there are things surrounding when you look at public health and the things that we do. We were awarded $60,000 for Trillium, and we were able to use that for opioid, our opioid uses. We have a kiosk across the street, I don't know if you've seen it or not, but that kiosk, people can go in and get Narcan and COVID tests, so, and it's totally free. And then we have a Rural Health Grant of $150,000 that we've had for the last three years, and that can be used for, we use the clinical service to help offset some of those issues or those expenses for our uninsured here in the county. Just want to mention our community health assessment, we did it this past year, have a wonderful document, if you're interested, it tells you about Sampson County, issues that we found, and what we plan to do over the course of the next couple, few years. Questions?
Yes, ma'am. What exactly is Family Planning?
It's a clinic where we provide services for women, and women 20, well, you can actually start with 10 on us. It's where folks can come in and get access to critical, productive, and sexual health, be able to person help, birth control, and those kind of things. And it's based on their income or whatever.
And is that mandated?
Yes, it is.
You have a quick?
If we could just get a copy of the PowerPoint, maybe put it on SharePoint where we can review it. I could see some of it up there, but my vision's not that great.
Okay. We'll be glad, we'll be glad to share.
Sure, with your permission, I wonder if you might give some thought, what do you think are the most critical things facing public health in the next one to two years? And particularly, your department here in Sampson County, the most critical things that you're going to be facing, challenges you have to overcome?
So funding, for sure. We have not, so far, we've been, we are good, in that we have not had any reductions. So that's been good, but I do have concern that, you know, looking at and being able to provide the services that we need to provide for our indigent people here in the county is my concern. I see that my cohort from the hospitals here, maternal health program, I serve a major number of indigent folks here in the county, and that is an important service here, because we want to continue to reduce infant mortality is the one thing that we want to make sure that we are doing. We don't want to have a lot of dead babies here. So we want to be able to provide those genetic care services to make sure that they're going to have a healthy baby. Recruitment and retention is going to be very important for us, funding. Um. Uh, recruitment and retention, uh, is going to be very important for us. Finding, um, um, folks that are qualified and able to do what we need to do. That is going to be very important because if we don't have the staff to do what we need to do, we're not gonna be providing services. As you can see, if I don't have nurses, if I don't have practitioner, I was without a practitioner for six months of this year already. That does impact what my end, at the, my bottom line is going to be, it really does. Uh, so, um, the camera helped me, um.
Billing staff has been a constant turnover and it's, it, I mean, filing the claims, working the denials, it's full-time job. I've had that job off and on now for five years, um, in addition to what I'm doing. Hopefully, hopefully we'll have somebody. So, but, um, but it, it is a, my, my accounting tech and I are tag teaming the duties of the biller right now in addition to our other duties, trying to make sure claims are filed on time, denials are worked so that we do get the largest payment that we came back, um, for the services we provided. Because if we don't bill the insurance, we can provide services all day long, but if we don't bill the insurance and don't work the denials, we don't get paid. I mean, that's, that's a big, a big point right now.
And I know there's one bill, I think, that's in the legislature right now, isn't it? Our community disease and, um, TV services and those kinds of things. We cannot, a big, we cannot, hopefully that will not fail because, um, community disease, anything can happen anytime. Um, so, um, that's gonna be very important.
So how many hours do you have to put in for billing?
Do I have to put in?
Yeah.
I don't even know right now. I, I'm trying to work it in and I'm re, I'm, you know, this is budget time, so that's my priority. But I'm also having to carve out an hour or two a day to make sure I file the claims. And then thirty minutes here and there to see if I can work on some denials. And then my accounting tech is trying to get the payments that have come in, the breakdowns over to finance so they get them posted so we can get our reports, because without my reports, I can't do my monthly pull-down from state. So it's, it's all intertwined and connected.
And Medicaid, making sure that people have access to services. Medicaid is going to be so very important so that we can continue the medical community and continue to provide the services that we need to provide and that people can have access to services that they need, very important, very important.
Now, is it correct to underst, uh, is it a correct statement to say that the county, uh, incorrectly qualifies somebody for Medicaid? And then they go to the hospital and get a service on Medicaid and then Medicaid denies the claim that it comes back on the county?
So DSS is behind us, it's not.
Oh, so that's DSS?
That's DSS, that's not health. We are the, we provide the services and bill. And we, we.
Throw that question at them.
Well done, Wanda. Are there any contract services for like the billing? That, where you take a percentage of the claim or anything like that?
We, we, we don't. Um, our EHR, cure and d does offer that service, but we do not use it for that service.
We're doing it at Sam's.
We're doing that, we're doing it in-house with staff.
Have you balanced the pros and the cons versus that? Have you examined it in detail?
We've looked at it because the person that does the billing also backs up intake eligibility, which are the ones that check the people in, verify their insurance, um, get all the information needed to be able to provide the services, bill for those services. There are two of those people. We have two nurse practitioners and several nurses, sometimes we run four clinics a day. Um, that's two people to check in and out. If one of them is out, there has to be some backup. Um, and that biller is the primary backup for the intake eligibility. So it's not, they're not just sitting in an office billing all day. They have other roles, um, as far as backing up that, helping supervise that staff. They have questions about modifiers and that sort of thing.
So ma'am, you just have one direct report, I mean, person underneath you that reports to you?
I have three right now.
Yeah, three, accounting technicians?
Accounting technician and two intake eligibility billing staff. And then the biller, which is supposed to start shortly.
I just want to say that working with DSS and all the other areas that I've worked with in the county have equipped me with some understanding that others may not have and I'm not seeing anything bad about that. I'm seeing it help me, I'm talking about me now. I can understand where Wanda's coming from, I can understand what she's saying when she talks about weed, Medicaid, B-Sell, services for babies, and that is gonna help me, you know, to see what I can see, not nobody else, I'm talking about me. Cause other people might can just look at it and say they know all about it. But it's helped me to understand it, to carry it for, you know, so that's, that's a plus for me, I think. It didn't hurt at all for me to work here for thirty years. I know, you know, most of the programs, especially DSS, cause I've worked in there. And we had to refer people to you, to your department, so that's, that's sort of helpful. I appreciate everything I learned and I could have learned some more.
Thank you guys for watching, appreciate it.
Anything else? Ms. Wanda, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing our attention. Any, any part of education, just to do our job and review money at a time.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, may I take just a moment to, uh, to get the next presentation up?
Ms. Petty? Just come on over. And just to clear the air on something that was said to me about, I know the commissioner out there, I'll be, I'm gonna come clean with time. I'm going to have my foot, okay?
Services, however, the county is responsible for administering those services. And that's kind of what I said down there. So just like Wanda had shared, our core values and the mission statement at DSS, we provide a safety net, we help individuals that are at risk, and we improve social conditions within our communities. Our mission statement is to enhance the quality of life for residents by promoting self-sufficiency, preventing maltreatment, and providing supportive services. Okay, so we'll jump right into mandated services because I think that's the hot question. So what is an absolute have to? And we have several, but we'll start off with mandated social work services. And Jane, go ahead.
So I'm going to talk a little bit about the Child Protective Services section. Currently, we have, there are nine positions in Child Protective Services who carry caseloads. And what I mean by that is they carry cases where the social worker is investigating some type of child maltreatment. Currently, we have seven because two are in training. So we have right now seven people who are investigating all of the cases in Sampson County. How does it begin, though? How do we get these cases? We receive reports of child abuse and/or neglect through various ways. We may have someone walking off the street to do a self-report. The intake worker takes the report. We may get a phone call. Sometimes we get mail. We've even been known to get a text message at this point. So people are using all sorts of avenues to get information to us. We then use the information that we gather and we screen those reports against what the government, what the statute says that we have the authority to intervene in. We can't intervene in every situation. So the law is clear about what we can intervene in. We investigate issues that include substance abuse, supervision, medical abuse or medical neglect of children, sexual abuse, physical abuse, moral perpetuity. Those are just a few of the things that we investigate. There are others. The type of allegation made in the case determines how quickly we respond. So we have three different response times. We respond to a situation within 72 hours, or 24 hours, or immediately. So those are our three response times: 72, 24, and immediate. An example of an immediate case that we respond to would be a home where methamphetamine was being made. A home where a child is being sexually abused and the perpetrator lives in that home. A case where a child in his will has self-reported. Again, this is, these are laws. Our policy is derived from law. And so we respond based on the type of allegation that we get and then attach a response time depending on the allegation. We are often overseeing prior to law enforcement. Sometimes we're actually in the home when we realize there's something else going on and we have to call law enforcement to assist us. Lots of times, say, I'll go back to the case where methamphetamine is being made in the home. Lots of times, we are the first responders to that, or we're the first individuals that agency who becomes aware of that. And then, of course, we make referrals to law enforcement. They make referrals to us. Lots of times, we respond together, but we often respond alone, and we often respond immediately. We do home visits. They're often announced. And we are, we don't have the staff. I wish we had staff to send out to social workers on every home visit, but we don't. So most of the time, social workers are going out to respond to these situations by themselves. There are, the homes that we respond to, lots of times are in deplorable conditions to the point that we have to move shorter to another replacement until things can be cleaned up. We often take pictures of these homes. We take pictures of other evidence. We even take pictures of children's bodies. We have to do body inventories from time to time. Working with law enforcement, the school systems, doctors, nurses, probation, neighbors, foster parents, relatives, mental health, attorneys. We work with the SBI. We've worked with the FBI. We've worked with Homeland Security. We work with just about everybody to gather information about these allegations. We are allowed up to 45 days to complete our investigation. There are times when our investigation goes over, just depending on what's involved. But the state has said that we need to wrap it up within about 45 days. Sometimes that's difficult if you have a child that needs a medical evaluation, or there's a psychological evaluation that needs to happen. But at the end of the day, we have to make a case decision based on the information that we've gathered. We may find that there's nothing to this case, so we close our case and we move on. We may find that the children can stay in the home, but we need to stay involved as well to monitor. So that case will go to a different status, the case management status. And those are involuntary services. The family must work with us to try to improve the condition of the family, to maintain the safety of the children. A lot of times, the court system becomes involved at that point. And there are times when we have to remove the children, so they come into our legal custody. And that's where the foster care division comes in. And I'll let Ms. Rhonda Matthews talk a little bit about foster care.
Hi, good afternoon. So foster care has several different departments that are involved in it. It's not just foster care for children that have been removed from their parents. There is the general foster care. And what happens when a child comes into care is that we always have court oversight. The children are either placed with a relative, and that's who we always hope to place with first and foremost, or they're placed in a foster home. We monitor contacts with those children monthly. They have to have monthly face-to-face contacts. And then the social worker is working with the family in that time. It's our main goal is to reunify that child with their family members once their safety concerns have been eliminated. During the time that we have him in foster care, they also have court oversight. So we may only have to see that child once a month, but the judge may have ordered a two-hour visit every other week, or a four-hour visit every other week. And so our social workers are also responsible, not just monthly contacting the child, but for arranging the supervision of those visitations with the parents and other family members. Some of the other programs that encompass foster care placement include links and foster care 18 to 21. Once a child turns 18 and is an adult, they still have the option to be in the 18 to 21 program and still receive assistance from the state as long as they are meeting certain eligibility requirements. They have to maintain a job. They have to have a place to live. And that goes on until they're 21 years old. We also have adoption and guardianship services. And so we assist families where we have granted many custody to a relative or to a foster placement. We help them get adoption going if a parent's rights have been terminated, or if the parent has relinquished their rights. We also provide guardianship services, and that is similar to custody through the court, but the difference there is that the court retains jurisdiction in those cases in case we ever have to become involved again, which has happened several times recently. We assist with eligibility programs for state-funded adoption and guardianship services. So we also have to monitor the paperwork that goes along with, does it span when you meet the requirements for those eligibility payments for adoption and guardianship services. And then we also are in charge of monitoring and licensing foster homes. And so what that looks like is we have social workers and supervisors that provide, we call them MAPS, places for anyone interested in becoming a licensed foster placement. And then the supervisor and the social worker every month will monitor those homes to make sure they stay in compliance with state guidelines.
Rhonda, do you know how many foster homes we have in Sampson County?
We currently have, it's either 11 or 13 licensed foster homes. It's not very many.
And we don't have any children in care?
We currently have 111 children in care, and that is...
The reason I make that point is because social workers often have to get out of the county because we have to have these children out of the county in other placements.
I think right now, we have one child that's actually out of state, and that state has not agreed to do our ICPC business, so we're responsible for maintaining contact with that child. And like Jane said, we do have several children. There's only nine of those children out of the 111 that are in 18 to 21 program. All the others are 17 and under and require those contacts. And we have children as far away as, we have Franklinton, Greensboro. We have them all over the state. We try to do 1797s, which is an agreement between counties to get them to see the children. But they don't see them every single month when that agreement is in place, and we still have to make efforts every quarter to go out on our own. What questions can I answer about foster care? I'd do better in groups when there are questions.
If a person's interested in becoming a foster family, what's the first step in their path?
So we have one supervisor that is in charge of that right now. Her name is Melissa Newman. I can provide contact information for her. They would call her, and she would let them go win our MAP class that's scheduled for. I think there are actually some classes happening right now. She would be able to give them all the information about the where and when. I can't remember how many classes it is for the MAP class, but it's a certain spin. And there's a process for the eligibility check list. All right, thank you.
I wanted to mention one other thing about Child Protective Services. When we go into a, we receive a report. We may receive just a single report of a child that's been sexually abused, but they have five other siblings in the home. Now we have six victims because we look at not just that victim child that's potentially being sexually abused. We have now six victims because we look at all the children in the home. So when a worker has a case, it's not just on that one child. It's on the entire family and not just the one child. And not just the children. We have to assess the well-being and the issues that may be going on with any adult that's living in that home, even a grown sibling. So there's a 20-year-old's brother living in the home. We have to assess that part as well. The reason I mention that is because it's important. There's a standard of how many cases of social worker should handle, and I think we have a slide about that. So often, ever since I've been here, we've surpassed that.
Next, we have...
Hi, Jane, everyone. I'm Carrie Phillips. I'm the Adult Services Program Manager, and I'm going to talk a little bit about the adult side of social work. We have a lot of similarities to the protective services as children. However, we, there are some differences. With that, of course, we do intake, we have the intake process along with the children's services that takes the reports. They have to be thorough with the reports. And then it moves on to an evaluation once it's screened. Once that case is screened, it's usually, if it's screened in, it is for an immediate 24-hour or 72-hour response, depending on the type of case. Our protective services are for abuse, neglect, and exploitation, and that is person exploitation along with asset exploitation that we investigate.
And Carrie, would you say that the financial exploitation is the biggest form of adult maltreatment that we deal with?
Between neglect and exploitation, yes.
Self-neglect and value exploitation.
And care taken by neglect, yeah. Just neglect and exploitation. With that, we have 30 to 45 days to complete our evaluations. Our evaluations include talking with the adult privately. We have to have that private conversation. We talk with collaterals. We obtain medical records. We gather all this information to try and make a determination on whether or not somebody is meeting that criteria. And once we find out whether or not we're going to substantiate or unsubstantiate, if we make that determination that we are going to substantiate or confirm the maltreatment, then we move into our planning and mobilization. Our planning and mobilization services include providing that protection as long as the adult is willing, able, responsible, wanting to obtain that protection. So we have one social worker that does do primarily providing protection for the adults in our county. If they are incapable of providing protection for themselves, then we may have to do petitions to court. The court comes into play, and we try to have a guardian appointed for those individuals who are unable to obtain services for themselves.
Carrie, how many wards do we have right now?
So going into guardianship, we do have, we are now contracting with a company called Generations Family Services. They provide the case management for our wards. We have 51 right now that we service. We were providing those in-house. However, it became so much for the social workers because they were being spread, finding facilities. Again, we were having to go to the western part of the state just trying to see our people was mandated by the state. It just got a little out of control. So we did contract with Generations Family Services, and we have to monitor and provide oversight for those wards still. So even though they are appointed as the guardian, we do have to provide the monitoring and oversight that they are doing what they're supposed to do. In addition to that, we have to assess capacity. If we get a referral of somebody who may need a guardian, that it's not a protective services case, we have to assess the ability to get that person a guardian. So a lot of times, I'll use the example of, we have a 17-year-old that's getting ready to turn 18 that's special needs, and they're from a low-income family. They're not able to afford those services. So they can't hire an attorney, but they need a guardian to make those decisions. So we assess that ability. We go ahead and petition the court and assist them with getting their family member in place for guardianship. The services for the blind is a state contracted worker that comes to our agency. They provide services for the visually impaired, blind, and deaf-blind individuals in our area. It could be eye exams. It could be glasses. It could be special equipment, and that's to assist those services. We don't have a social worker in-house for that. That does, that does come from the state. Let's see, adult care home. We have two family care homes. We did have three. We now have two family care homes and three adult care homes that we have to monitor and complete investigations for any complaints. So we, the county has to go out and provide oversight for those facilities once a quarter. It's a certain rural area that the state mandates us to go out and look at, and we go out and make sure that they are in compliance. If we have a complaint that comes in on a specific facility, that's the adult care home, or family care home, or the adult daycare, we monitor that as well. We have to go in and investigate those complaints, no matter what the rural area is. So that takes social workers to be able to get specialized training for that and to go out and run those duties. The big change this year has been Special Assistance in Home. Special Assistance in Home is a program for those who meet the criteria to go into a facility but want to remain at home, and they have the support in the home. So this is a financial benefit that goes to them, and we have to provide case management. So we used to have a cap on how many people we could have, how many slots we had available, but the state has now imposed that go away. So now anybody who is eligible for that program must be considered, and if they meet those requirements, approved. We went from...
18 to 55?
Yes. Big substantial growth in the past year in our Special Assistance in Home program. And I think I will delve in just a little bit on some of that growth and what that So that's all I have for this slide.
Thank you, Carrie.
I think I got the next one.
Oh, we can go ahead and go into this one since Carrie's up here. So while we've been talking about mandated services, we do offer a select few non-mandated services. If anyone can go into these.
So our non-mandated services, we have a small pot of money that comes from the federal government that allows us to have, it's usually about enough for one person under the age of 60 to attend our adult daycare program. And it provides assistance for somebody who may be at home, and maybe they have an individual who is under the age of 60 but needs supervision to be able to attend that program.
And do we have any clients in that right now?
Right now, we have no clients in that program. Our last client aged out, so we're waiting to fill that. And then the next is the In-Home Aid Program. This is also a federal-funded program. As a lot of you may know, it is very difficult to get aid services in the home and insurance to cover it. If you don't have Medicaid, you're probably not going to get that in the home unless you have some sort of skill need with it. So this program is for those who are under the age of 60, and it's to help provide some aid services in the home to provide cleaning, cooking, bathing, dressing, you know, meeting those essential needs in the home.
And how many are in that firm now, Carrie?
And we contract with a home health agency to provide that service. Individual and family adjustment services also uses federal funds. This is a service to prevent adult protective services. It's really to help those who may need just that little bit of case management and help and guidance in the home. It can help with services such as arranging medical care, or making sure that they're getting to the doctor, or therapy, whatever those services may be that they may need. We only have, I think, two right now in that program, but it's just to help those preventative services. And then lastly, we have the HOPE Resource Center. Our HOPE Resource Center is, it's just a little section in our lobby. If you get a chance, you can go see our HOPE Resource Center in the lobby. It's got all kinds of information of services that are available within our county, or, you know, that service our county for those who need help. They need to know where to go. They don't know what to do. And it's just kind of a resource center. Our social worker uses it a lot as well when we've got families and children that have these needs and they don't even know where to go, what to do. They go to this resource center and provide those services to them. Housing, shelter, food banks. We've got a whole list of things if they needed aid or private sitter. Lots of people get those lists. There's just a lot of things to worry about.
And for 2024, the HOPE assisted almost 2,000 individuals. Thank you, Carrie.
How many, did you say, it says 2,000?
2,000 individuals. We'll go right back over to another mandated services and the economic section.
Hello, I'm Brady Jones. I'm one of the implementing supervisors on the economic services side. The economic services section of DSS is responsible for offering some of the services. I know that you probably have a lot of questions on that I heard earlier, and one of them is Medicaid. Medicaid is for family and children. That section is for, we offer services for, it would be for your pregnant women, your children, your adults, long-term care facilities, or long-term care patients. We also offer services for work-first family assistance, work-first employment services, emergency assistance. I think that's the general assistance fund that...
That's mandated.
Mandated. Childcare subsidies, electronic benefit card, EBT, which is a lot where people get the food nutrition benefits. There are also their childcare, child support payments go on that. Also, they get their food nutrition, I'm sorry, nutrition benefit services on it. And also, there is one more service that goes on that one as well. What is that?
Work first.
Workers, thank you. Low-income energy assistance, which is, some of you know that program as LIAP. Child support services is also mandated under economic services. Special assistance to elderly and disabled adults. Then we also have the Crisis Intervention Program, which is also known as CIP. You also have the Non-Emergency Transportation, which is also known as NEMT. And that is also that we partner with, says the area transportation, they offer that services, and they are our contractor for that. Then we also have Special Assistance in Home and Program Integrity. Those are the mandated services, and we'll actually talk about those services. Just wanted to kind of go down briefly of what those services are. So I want to open it up to questions first because I know that you guys are going to have questions. So I'd rather go ahead and just let's start with the questions first, and then we can go into a deeper dive of what those programs offer.
Well, the question I had earlier about the Medicaid, a person getting improperly qualified for Medicaid, and they come to find out, when Medicaid scrutinizes it at the higher level, they deny the claim, and then the hospital sends the county the bill. How does that happen exactly, that it would get, somebody would get improperly qualified? Is it because their income wasn't scrutinized properly, or?
Yes. So it could be that the household composition was done wrong. We looked at it incorrectly, or the income was calculated incorrectly, or we just looked at the household size wrong. Those could be some of the things. It could be that we looked at the deductible wrong, put them in the wrong program. But...
System error.
Well, if it's a system error, that automatically is going to be a state error. So we would not even have to look at that. If we've done that and it becomes a system error, then that's going to be a state problem. That's not going to be a county problem. But if it is a, if it is a county problem, then we are going to have an opportunity to fix that, to see if they would have been eligible in another program. If they would have been eligible in a program, then if it still would have been to where the bills could have been paid, the payment would have, the overpayment would have been a little, as long as they're still eligible in an aid category. But if they're ineligible at any point, then at that point, we'll be looking at what are we actually responsible for? It's not that we were responsible for all of the bills. It might be that we're only responsible for a little bit of those bills.
And it's your problem areas that will happen. There's other areas in our, in our department where we have to, our, the program is being fairly funded, and there may be an error. Sometimes, I would suggest, a lot of the times, is because we are, our caseloads are too big, and we don't have enough workers to properly manage those caseloads.
I would also chime in, ever-changing policy on top of COVID waivers. So while this is the policy, and you may have known the policy, we put this waiver on it, and now this person may be eligible, then we take away the waiver, and then, so you have new staff that are working with waivers that don't know original policy. Also, I would, this is on a different slide, but we can go ahead and talk about it, the M and E audit?
Yes.
So recently, is that...
That's good stuff. So with Medicaid, I'll go back to Medicaid. So with Medicaid, for our newer staff that come in, we, they go through a year-long, basically, even before we let them go and just do cases all by themselves. They are second partying. And what that second party looks like is, we train them, and there's, we sit with them. They're with their lead worker, they're with their supervisor. They do not just get to go process cases on their own. So it's not like, hey, you sit down, here's the policy, you read it, and we're just going to let you go do Medicaid on your own. No. They're sat down, they go through an extensive training with their supervisor, with their lead worker, and then we second-party all their cases for a good year before they're allowed to go and do Medicaid by themselves. So that is to ensure that we're not allowing somebody to get Medicaid that is not eligible. So if we do have, if we do see that there's an error, we're going to go ahead and fix that error before that Medicaid is even authorized in the program. So that's to ensure that the county is not getting any payback. And plus, we do not like to see the state come down and start looking at our cases and say, hey, you know what? You authorized somebody who should not have been authorized. So I don't like that at all. Any more questions?
I don't.
Did you guys have questions about these programs and want to go individually into what each program does? Would you do that? Okay.
So I want to let Ms. Phillips talk about work first, that'll just kind of give you an overview of what first looks like.
Okay, work first, like the Special Assistance in Home program, is kind of a dual part. It has the eligibility part, but it also has the case management part. Work first is a... Um, work first is a financial benefit that goes to those individuals who, um, who have children in the home. They have to have a child, um, and they have to be a very, very low income or no income, um, for the most part. We do have, they provide short-term like training. They provide help with employment seeking and employment, um, management. Um, and it also is a support program for those who say their grandparents raising grandchildren. It's a support program for, um, for those individuals as well, but it's just a small financial benefit, um, that's available. And then the emergency assistance program, that is our general assistance fund. That is, um, a fund that we, it helps in those emergency crisis situation. And the example I like to give with this is say, we have a disabled adult who's homeless and this homeless individual is ten degrees outside. It's late at night and we can't get them to a shelter because the shelter is closed at a certain time. So we may have to use this fund to provide safety protection for that adult in maybe a hotel room for the night until we can get them to a shelter. So that's kind of one of the examples I can use that this fund is for. It's only for those emergency situations that were required by statute to provide.
Um, childcare subsidies, that is, um, for our childcare, um, for clients who have a need for childcare. So what, right now we currently have a waiting list, um, and, but we did get an influx in funding, so we are able to actually start working our waiting lists now. We have to stay at ninety-five percent, but they did up that fund, um, that threshold to ninety-seven percent because we did get an influx in, um, funding. So, um, which means that now we are able to work our waiting lists. And I think that, um, in my technical assistance, um, meeting today with my T A, she said that we can actually serve sixty-five children. But we have to keep a delicate balance because we also have to make sure that we have funding set aside to be able to service our, um, foster care children and our children that are, um, being serviced through CPS and, um, CWS. So we have to make sure that we still have that set aside as well. Um, and we work closely with our childcare providers that are in our county and rural counties. And then food and nutrition, um, benefits, everybody knows what SNAP is. Um, and if you have any questions, we can answer those as well. Um, low count, low income energy assistance program, that, um, ser-, that service just ended in March thirty-first and I'm going to open that up to Ms. Monica Price, our program manager. She is the guru. She has been servicing this program for probably the last.
Thirty-five years.
Yes. Um, she has been servicing, um, LIAP and SIP for probably, how long is this process?
Six months.
Okay, so for a long time.
Good afternoon, everyone. The LIAP program is only a program that starts in December and it lasts till end of March. That program helps people with their eating habits. Anyone that is income eligible can receive those benefits to payments of either three hundred, four hundred, or five hundred dollars that they will receive. And that depends on how many people's in the household and how much the income is. The crisis and adventure program is similar, but it's a year long, as long as we got funding. Um, that program is also based on income. Uh, they have to have a disconnect notice, uh, for an electric assistance. Uh, they can come in and right now, we have had people to come in with bills over three thousand dollars. We were lucky enough to get some due share funds to help with us, but we try to help people to, um, keep their lights on. And one time we helped with, um, fuel, oil, kerosene, whatever they need to keep there. And right now, we, um, do not know if we're going to get any funding started in the new year. Um, right now, um, they're telling us that they don't because of no budget's been passed on the state level, level or federal level. And our, um, funding comes from the federal government.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name's Duane Louie and I'm the program manager supervisor with the child support services, um, department. We currently have thirteen employees, including myself, and we offer legal services to people that might want to take up child support. Um, we have our main contract attorney who work in Bradshaw and we have two secondary attorneys. If there's a conflict with his office, Mr. Starling or Ms. Ray. Um, I can give you a couple of highlights of the past year or so. We collected, um, six point four million for our county. Um, and when we break that down with the cost effectiveness for the last time, for every dollar that was spent on child support, we brought back five dollars and eleven cents. Currently, we have over twenty-eight hundred cases in the count. Um, we are looking forward to those cases, case load growing in the future. Um, effective July first, all Medicaid recipients will again have to cooperate with child support. During the COVID era, um, that was waived for people, but it has finally come back, um, July the seventh, so we'll get more, more people in, um, and our case load should increase. We also bring in money through incentives through the federal programs. Um, and those incentive monies that we bring back in, we have two contracted deputies with the sheriff's office and those monies go to pay for those. Um, the sheriff's office will serve our paperwork in county so that we can, um, have people in court when they're behind on their child support order to establish or modify any court orders. This, um, and we do get referrals from Medicaid, like I said. We also get referrals from work first family assistance. Um, and we also have people to come in off the street, um, that may ask for our services and if they don't qualify for Medicaid or work first, the fee is only twenty-five dollars. Um, if there's someone that's not receiving one of those services and they follow on a sliding scale, then that would be ten dollars. Um, if y'all have any questions, I'm free to answer.
Sir, if you could explain a little bit more detail. You said that for every dollar you spend, you get five dollars eleven cent back. Would you?
The cost effectiveness for that particular fiscal year was, um, for every dollar that was spent on the program, um, which would have been a little over a million, calculates into, they divide it into the six point four that was brought back through the county and that's how they come up with the five dollars and eleven cents.
Is that coming from the state or the federal government?
From the individuals.
From the individuals.
Okay, so you're getting payments back?
Yes, sir. We, we're, we're a collection. We collect the money.
Child support.
Yes.
If the Medicaid recipient don't cooperate with child support, what's, what happens?
Um, well, moving forward, then we would sanction that person that's got the case, the adult, they would lose their Medicaid, but the child would not. Um, and we can still move forward with the case and getting a case if it's just for insurance only. So therefore, whenever that person would come back in and cooperate and they would want our services, we wouldn't start from scratch.
Sir, are you, uh, fully staffed right now?
Yes, sir. We've been fully staffed for almost three years. We've not had a whole lot of turnover, thank God. And my fault.
Thank you, Duane.
Thank you.
Do you need non-emergency?
Yes, go ahead.
So non-emergency transportation, that is where, um, ties in with Medicaid. They have to be eligible in a Medicaid eligible category in order to be eligible for non-emergency transportation. That is where we partner with San San area transportation and we take them to and from their appointments. Um, however, we also couple that with anybody who has a vehicle of their own and if they want to be reimbursed, um, then we can do reimbursement. That actually flows through and that's where we work with the county and there's model reimbursement where the client would have to fill out these forms and, um, we would send them in and they get reimbursed either at thirty-five cents or sixty, seventy cents right now is the reimbursement rate. That comes from the federal government and then depending on whether or not they're responsible for themselves or someone else is driving them, that depends on what rate they get reimbursed at. Um, re-reimbursed, if they're driving themselves, they get reimbursed for, if they're going to Chapel Hill and say they have to be, they have to park their car, they got a parking toll. As long as they keep that parking toll, um, we'll take it. They can be reimbursed for that. A lot of them don't know that. Um, they can be reimbursed for their, um, food, depending on what time of day that they have their appointment. Um, they can also be reimbursed for hotels, um, if they have an overnight stay, um, they can be reimbursed for that. We've also had one client where she had a long duration for her minor child where she had to stay in, um, the Monty Don house and we had to pay for that. Um, it was twenty-five dollars a day, I believe it was at that time. Um, so they get a reduced rate. So those are some of the things that we reimburse for, um, through non-emergency, um, Medicaid transportation. Any questions on that? If not, I'm going to go ahead and jump down to program integrity and then I will turn it over to, um, Ms. Wendy Leonardo, who will round us up for, um, special assistance in home. So program integrity is where we, um, if anyone is suspected of fraud, so if they are, don't report their household correctly and they are determined to, um, be committing fraud, then we have someone who is our, um, fraud investigator and she will investigate that. She will do home visits. Um, she will, um, call their landlord. She may request their wages. And after she completes her investigation, then she may have to, um, do a ADH, that's for food nutrition. So for food nutrition, if they're determined that, yes, after all her investigation, they are, have committed fraud, then she will do a intentional program violation, which means that they, if they're found guilty, they may be ineligible for food, for food nutrition benefits for a certain period of time, maybe one year. If they've had a second offense, maybe two years. Um, if it's for, um, Medicaid, we cannot do, um, intentional program violation, but they may be responsible for paying back the monies that they were overpaying. Now, we have had some where we've had to take it to court. Um, so we take them to court, then they, um, have a certain duration that they have to pay back those monies and if they don't, then that family goes on the record. Um, so we do take fraud seriously, um, when it comes to if we do find out that they are committing fraud and we will investigate those. Um, but that's against every program that is in the agency that we will investigate those. Any questions?
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening. This is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm Mark. Um, my name is Wendy Leonardo and I supervise the adult Medicaid, the long-term care Medicaid units. Um, we are responsible for implementing, um, a course, adult Medicaid, which is for individuals between, um, well, all individuals beginning at age zero, um, who are either age blind or disabled. Um, long-term care Medicaid, um, provides medical assistance to individuals who require placement in a skilled nursing facility. Um, the special assistance program, um, excuse me, um, there are two programs, one being the special assistance to the elderly and disabled. Those individuals require replacement into an assisted living facility. And then the special assistance in home program, as mentioned previously, um, is a program for individuals who meet the requirements to be placed into an assisted living facility but choose to remain home, um, and hopefully safely. Um, so those are the, the programs that, that I supervise. Um, currently, um, I actually have, I think, twelve workers, um, under my supervision to implement those programs.
And Medicaid expansion has hit your unit. That is, that's your unit who's responsible for that influx of cases?
Well, the adult Medicaid expansion program actually falls under the family and children.
Children, okay.
Um, but, you know, obviously, you know, we are, um, you know, kind of involved as far as ensuring the individuals that we meet with if they meet the criteria that they are referred.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Wendy?
I hope not.
Okay.
Any questions?
You're fine.
Thank you.
Take a deep breath.
We will move into funding. So that is a lot of programs, a lot of mandated programs. So funding is, uh, is complicated because it's an intricate pattern of federal, state and county funds. So these programs can, um, contribute federal and state dollars to local economies, but they also require expenditure for, um, county funds. So entitlement programs, this is your food and nutrition, your Medicaid, your SA in home, meaning that if an individual applies for this service and they meet the eligibility requirements, they must receive the service. So federal benefit payments are uncapped, but the administrative costs retired, um, that does come out of a county portion payment. Reimbursement. So DSS has reimbursed a portion of worker salary and benefits, overhead, indirect cost, and these are all based on allowable expenditures for services provided to citizens. So we have a little pie chart over here. The usual, um, breakup is seventy percent federal, twenty-six percent state and four percent county. This talks about the different funding sources for services, reimbursement, you have child welfare on this side and adult services on this side. Pretty much when the child comes, um, when we're involved with a child, most of that funding is going to be titled for E and that is fifty percent federal, fifty percent county. The, um, funds under that are all capped, so, you know, there's, there's a limit to those and then, um, those, you use whatever the child is eligible for, depending on the services that they're receiving. For adults, they have the social services block grant, which is capped, but they also have MAC, which is Medicaid Administrative Cleaning, which pays for a portion of guardianship and has, um, become a large pay source for adult services. So when we can use MAC, we use MAC because that is uncapped and you can use it when you're, um, connecting clients to a Medicaid service. You can use it when you're doing anything related to Medicaid. So if I'm talking to you about Medicaid, I can document that and code that to MAC. Incomplience reimbursement is a little bit more. So our food and nutrition services are fifty percent federal, fifty percent county. Medicaid eligibility requirements and enrollment is seventy-five percent federal and twenty-five percent county. The administration of Medicaid is fifty-fifty, federal and county. LIAP, CIP, which we talked about, the childcare and the work first, those are, um, all capped. And Duane talked about child support. So the reimbursement rate for child, uh, child support is sixty-six percent federal and thirty-four percent county. And like he mentioned, they do receive incentives, um, funds for meeting the, um, meeting the standards.
Patty, if you would speak just for a minute, we're talking about capped versus uncapped programs. Define capped and uncapped for us.
So uncapped, it's unlimited resources. Therefore, the money is there and you just spend, spend what you need out of that money. You code that money. However, capped is, um, when, you can code to this program if they're eligible, but once that money runs out, it's gone. Then you can move to a different fund. Then you, you use that money until it's gone, but these all have a, a definite amount. So we get those estimates from the, um, the state and then we use what, what we can. And after we go from the uncapped, the, once you reach that, then you, you reached it. There's no more, it's county money after that. A lot of times, the, um, like the LIAP and the CIP, it's a yearly cap to, we'll run out of that money and that, once you're out of that money, then the program is, is done. We just don't offer it anymore. And the same goes with that childcare administration. That one, um, as we get more money, you can offer it to more children, but when the waiting list happens, when the, you're at your amount, the capped amount. Any questions? So MOU and federal performance measures. So starting January, the state, um, has begun to implement a corrective action process for counties that fail to comply with the terms of the MOU mandated performance measures. There are several performance measures, different ones for all the mandated services that I, that we have just gone through. Um, so I'm not going to list them all, but just know that for child support, there's four annually and the rest are monthly. So you have two for, uh, special assistance, two for adult protective services, one for child welfare, foster care, three for food and nutrition, two for work first and two for energy programs. And they're saying if you, um, fail to meet these performance measures, then they, then you'll start, um, the corrective action processes, say, well. corrective action processes, say we'll start that with you. This has always been in the MOU, however, it just really wasn't enforced. Now it is starting January. So let's talk about our performance. Now, I've been in meetings where we share some demographic with, some demographics with Granville, Columbus, and Lenore. When it comes to workload, we are like four times the workload of Granville and then twice Columbus and Lenore. And I think if you were to combine Columbus and Lenore, we still have more cases. So we may be similar to these counties and some things were not similar to them when it comes to assessment numbers. We had for 2024, four hundred and ninety assessments with a timely rate of ninety-three.
And Patty, you're talking about specifically CPS assessments?
CPS assessments. And that's kind of where everything starts, like the, when we really start to get involved with these families and then, I mean, you might start at CPS and you might end up in foster care. So who, who are we comparable to when it comes to the workload and the caseload size? We are comparable to Surrey, Lincoln, Wilson, and Brockingham. Now, out of those counties, we have the second high timeliness rate. So timeliness rate means the immediate, the twenty-four and the forty, seventy-two, that we're meeting that, that you have met that mark. So we are the second highest and Sampson County is the largest county by far square footage wide. So who beats us in timeliness? Lincoln County. Who is the smallest county area-wise? So we're doing the same work they're doing, but we're covering a bigger area, which is travel. Travel, travel. If I need to go to Garland in the Newton Grove or Avon Hill, Wildcat Lane, it's all day. It's all day.
All day.
So these are, I'm not going to read all these out, but these are your average incominance caseloads in 2024. Food and nutrition, we're up in the six hundreds, family and children, long-term care. At the very bottom, you see special assistance in home. And this is the one that the state used to assign us slots. So you were assigned slots and that was it. Well, it has moved to an entitlement program. So in 2024, we had eighteen. Today, we have fifty-five. And on the other side, we have audits. So when we're talking about performance, these are the audits that are happening, the monthly report card, the Rita audit, management and evaluation audit, which was recently completed and we, this is for food and nutrition, did not have any paybacks from that audit. So agency challenges. Some of our challenges are high caseloads, staff feeling inadequately trained to perform their job, staff safety, and staff turnover. For the caseloads, the state recently came out with recommended caseloads. So for CPS assessors, who are the ones investigating, their recommended caseload is six. Our workers on, was Monday the eleventh on Monday, had fourteen. In-home services had, their recommended caseload is seven, and these are the involuntary services that Jane spoke about. And our cases per worker are seven, which is great. And the reason that that is a better ratio is because we recently, well, I'm not going to say recently, maybe at the end of last year, were able to reclassify a position to get another in-home services worker. So we added a position and then the caseloads are better because of that.
Because prior to that reclassification, the in-home workers, which there were four, their caseloads were like sixteen, seventeen cases. And again, it's not just a case, because each case might have five children. You might have a case that's got one kid. You might have a case that has three kids. You might have a case where they have six kids. So you can do the math on that.
And for foster care, the recommended caseload is eight children and our foster care workers right now have ten children. So we have been able to, you know, what are the solutions to this? For the high caseloads, in the past, the county had approved reclassifications of positions to meet the needs of the agency. For staff feeling inadequately trained to perform their job, we have really invested in the training unit and one-on-one staff to provide that one-on-one training for new staff. Staff safety, we have had a couple of ordeal's over at our building. It's volatile. When somebody's trying to take your child or, you know, say that you've got to do something or you've got to do this before you can do that, you know, people can sometimes lose it. So staff safety is a biggie and we were able to reduce that by obtaining the metal detector and an onsite security guard. And then staff turnover, which we have a turnover chart right here, it was very, very high, twenty-twenty-two. We were able to implement with the county's support flex schedules and telework opportunities and our percentage for turnover has decreased, as our chart shows. Now, projected turnover, if, you know, things kind of stay the same for 2025, is about ten percent. And we started at thirty percent. Any questions about this? So final thoughts and takeaways. DSS services are federally mandated, state-supervised, and county-administer. Allowable expenditures are reimbursed monthly and an appropriately funded and staff social services assist in ensuring the well-being and safety of the county's most vulnerable citizens. Any final questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. We appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, would the board be agreeable to a five-minute recess to allow us to reset?
Well, it'll take a recess if I have it.
Sampson Regional Medical Center. Y'all had a good time.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jerry Heisman. I'm Chief Financial Officer for Sampson Regional Medical Center. I've been an employee at a hospital for twenty years. I came in as CFO and happy to be a member of the community and a part of the hospital.
And I'm Sean Hart. And I'm Chief Medical Officer and CEO. I've been in the community for twenty years now with the hospital since 2011. And in my current role, going on eleven years now.
Ten years. Scared. We work together long. We asked to come and talk a little bit about some of the issues involving the county healthcare, if you will, healthcare in the county and the community. And some of the greatest challenges we have facing the community or facing the hospital for the community. The first thing, we're rural. We talk about it all the time, even in our administrative meetings on a weekly basis. The reality of rural and healthcare is very similar to other rural communities in the country. We have a small pool of fish in for resources. Getting expertise can sometimes be challenging. Dr. Howerton will talk about some of the successes on the professional side in a few minutes about what we've done with recruiting to get doctors and physicians and PAs into the community. So staffing becomes a problem. We are very, it does not come without a cost, I guess is the best thing to say, especially as Chief Financial Officer. Our starting salary at Sampson Regional Medical Center is as high as or higher than money at Raleigh hospitals. Why is that? Because people can drive to Raleigh or Fayetteville or Wilmington just as easy and get more money. So we decided several years ago that we needed to be as competitive as they are to maintain our local workforce in Sampson County. So it's been a very positive for us and we've had very much reduced turnover from the clinical side as a result of that decision. So that's positive for us. The reality in a rural community is many of the times our patients are sicker. Why are patients sicker? Access to healthcare. It's tough to get to other areas if you need specialty care and primary care. Again, Dr. Howerton will talk about recruiting, but primary care is an ongoing concern for rural America. There's just not enough primary care available. And I forget what the number is of doctors that are retiring each year between now and the next ten years, but it's significant and we're no different here. So getting in to see a doctor, sometimes you have long waits and so forth. So by the time patients get to the hospital, many times they're sicker. Another thing that affects rural hospitals, and this is a reality and it's a system that is made from the federal side of the world, our reimbursement differs. And many people don't realize that, but all hospitals are based, paid, part of Medicaid reimbursement, which is half our inpatient business, is based on a wage index. And a wage index for Sampson County is a North Carolina Rural Wage Index, which is the lowest wage index in North Carolina. That's reality. That's part of the federal payment system. If you look at our reimbursement for Sampson County, and we took our patient base from Medicare and compared it to most of our, and I'm not allowed to give any names, I won't say any names specifically, competing hospitals, because they have reclassified from Raleigh to where they're at, we would get an extra $1.2 million a year on any given year, more reimbursement if we had been able to reclassify to a tertiary area like some of our neighboring hospitals do. And again, we have hospitals, we're rural, we talk about rural, thirty-five miles in almost any direction from where Sampson County is, there's a competing hospital. So that is very challenging when their reimbursement is so much higher than ours to be able to sustain. So rural has its own issues. Next thing we talk about, and I'll put a chart up in a few minutes, is payer mix. We have a payer mix where sixty-five percent of our business is governmental, Medicare and Medicaid, probably another three or four percent for TRICARE that comes through in one way, shape, or form. So the majority of our business is governmental. And on top of that sixty-five percent, seven percent for 2024 was self-pay. And we talk about self-pay. Self-pay is no pay. And I say that very sincerely because for every self-pay dollar that comes in the door, so if you come in and say you're self-pay, the hospital's collection on that on average is five cents. So that's self-pay. Self-pay truly is, I have no means. With the changes in Medicaid, and I listened to Ms. Robinson talk a little bit about Medicaid and what their folks, the DSS folks do, based on current guidelines, we have to provide charity for folks that are up to three hundred and fifty percent of the federal poverty guidelines. So the amount of income for a family of four is close to eighty or ninety thousand dollars that will receive some type of assistance from a hospital if they have those income levels. So that has really driven a big change in healthcare market as we see it today. The next thing, governmental impact, or not governmental, commercial impact. I like to ask folks, and you've probably heard me ask this at a board meeting, what are hospital, what are insurance companies paid to do? Not pay claims. And it's an ongoing battle to get paid by commercial insurances. And I hope there's nobody from an insurance company in the room or somebody to tell me I just made a big mistake. But the reality is we have to fight for every dollar of commercial insurance that we get. The biggest challenge right now, and again Sampson is not unique, is Dr. Howerton comes into the hospital, he is sent to third floor. If he is an inpatient at a hospital, my reimbursement is much different than if Medicare says he can only be observed. And I'm not going to count that as an admission, even though you're in the hospital receiving the same care. An observation pays a hospital about fifteen hundred dollars. An admission pays about nine thousand dollars. So there's a huge difference. And many insurance companies, especially when you look at Medicare Advantage, will say, you're not really an admission, we're counting this as an observation patient. You could have been out quicker and therefore we're going to pay you a lower rate. So that's an ongoing real battle of the programs that we deal with every day.
Jerry, now can you touch on where money comes from?
Next slide again. Medicare right now is about forty-seven percent of our business on the bottom line on the left. Medicaid is twenty percent of our business right now. Blue Cross and Commercial runs about twenty-four percent. Self-pay, as I said, is seven percent. And other is TRICARE, CHAMPUS, some hospice patients we see. I'd like to give the example of if you go to the store, go to Walmart, the spend is two dollars. Let's say it's a dollar for easy math. How much do you pay for the pen? Dollar, right? If it's a dollar, then Walmart is a dollar. In healthcare, I can charge a dollar for this pen. On average, Medicare is paying me forty-five cents for that pen. And that depends, and I'll talk about it in a minute, Medicaid is probably paying me thirty-five or thirty-eight cents on a dollar for that pen. The Blue Cross and Commercial carriers are probably paying me seventy cents on a dollar for that pen. Again, I get zero from the self-paid population, or five cents for that self-paid population. What's really got tricky, and I did hear Ms. Robinson talk earlier about with Medicaid changes a couple of years ago, having Sampson County primarily has five different payers for Medicaid now, we have to negotiate each contract with each payer. There are state parameters that they have to deal within, but we negotiate contracts with each one of them. And the same is true for Medicare Advantage plans. Medicare Advantage plans are independently negotiated. So the hospital has a contract with Blue Medicare, with United Medicare, with Aetna Medicare. Each one of those are negotiated independently. So the reimbursement is not necessarily the same as what Medicare would pay for those services anymore. So, and then going back just for a minute, the other thing that changes is government payer uncertainty. Medicare has seen cuts, especially to rural areas. There is a Medicare-dependent hospital status for rural community hospitals that they've decreased funding for over time. Disportion share on the federal side has been decreased over time. And as we all know, what's happening with Medicaid, call me tomorrow and I may have still no idea because there's still talk every day, even while we've been in this meeting, about is it going to be a forward program? What's it going to be to do to people who are qualified for Medicaid and so forth? Sampson Regional Medical Center, if somebody doesn't qualify for Medicaid, Mr. Crumpler, no disrespect, I heard you ask a couple of times, if they're erroneously put in Medicaid and they don't qualify for Medicaid ninety percent of the time, that bill is just written off. We don't bill the county back for anybody who is erroneously put in Medicaid. So most of the times they were qualified for Medicaid, they were qualified for financial assistance for charity care, and it would be written off as a charity care case in most cases. The only time I think that we share dollars back and forth for any healthcare services, I think, is the BSEP program, where there's reimbursement through the BSEP program for mammograms and stuff like that. So there is no recourse back to the county, which is good news for you guys for those cases where if there is an error on DSI, we work together with those folks. They do a great job with us and very supportive for the hospital.
So a little bit unlike the previous presentations that you had, our money from the government, if you will, everything that we get, we care for a patient, we build patient insurance, sometimes that insurance is government, sometimes it's private. We get paid, we use those funds to support our business. That's where our, that's where our dollars come from. So partnership and opportunities between the county. We're asked if there's opportunities that we could look to expand or what are we currently doing? So probably five years ago, maybe a little bit longer, everything's a little bit gray with COVID. My dates are a little bit off, it's my gray hair. The county used to do a county needs assessment, the hospital did. Somewhere in the last five, six years, there was a grant for Eastern North Carolina. We both participated in it. We actually went ahead and did the, did the assessment early and actually working with, together collaboratively in that assessment and then also the planning. The other programs that we currently work with the county, our local emergency preparedness committee, we have representatives on that committee. That committee also, we work together on doing disaster drills. So our EMS, we're participating in the quarterly meeting. Our ER director that we pay is also the EMS director for the county as far as the physician, Dr. Keno. Sampson County Child Advocacy Committee, we participate in that with the county. The health department areas that we kind of share and overlap. Obstetrics, for years we've provided a physician to be able to come over here and see some patients that exceeded the care requirements of your nurse practitioners, PAs. Currently we're in limbo. We lost a very qualified provider, actually. It was very good for him. He had a very good promotion. And so we're currently recruiting additional obstetrician to fill that vacancy when we can, then we'll be able to offer that resource. The BSEP program, as was discussed earlier. Now, BSEP is to find cancer. So the, the state and federal government gives money to help do cancer screening. The moment that you, sorry Jerry, congratulations, you have cancer, that's where, that's where the funding ends. So there's no funding to treat the cancer. So we're helping to diagnose the cancer and then picking up the care and participating in that side of it. And then diabetes education program, depending on grants, have come and gone with the health department. From the community college perspective, we are the main clinical site for the nursing program, so R and L, P and CNA, medical assistants, EMTs, paramedics, and phlebotomists. And we've continued to work with it, community college on, teaming up on future programs. We've had some that we've started and both kind of said, well, that's not going to work for either of us. So it's an ongoing, ongoing collaboration. The county morgue, we have a morgue, and our morgue also serves as the county morgue. So when, and you guys pay the medical examiner. The sheriff's department, so probably closer to ten years ago, we looked and saw that in our community with the amount of involuntarily committed patients, we had a whole lot of officers stuck sitting in chairs, not thrilled to be there to watch a patient that was involuntarily committed. So we worked with the sheriff's department and came up with some criteria on, if they meet certain criteria, our security will sit with them and keep an eye on them. And the sheriff's department has entrusted us to do that. If they meet certain other criteria, then they'll send somebody in, which has worked out very well for both of us. And then as always, we're always open to look how else we can partner. So before we go on to next, questions about those current partnerships and, all right, so just go to the first one. Okay, don't hit, don't anything. So we're licensed for one hundred and forty-six beds. How many doctors do you think and providers does it require on an annual basis for us to run the hospital that we credential? Sorry, you know you were going to get that task, didn't you? So take a guess.
One to two.
One to two? Good.
I'm establishing a low bar.
That's great.
It's actually twelve to sixteen.
Five to sixteen.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six. So I've been in my role since 2011 as a chief medical officer, and on an annual basis, we credential anywhere between one hundred and thirty to one hundred and fifty physicians each year. So I'm going to trick you some more. So in the last two years, because everyone lives in Sampson County now, last two years, how many doctors have we recruited to our, to our hospital, providers?
Forty.
Forty? Any other guesses?
Twelve.
Twelve? That is, you cheated, forty-three.
We hate to hear.
So next, next, next slide. So in the last two years, we've recruited forty-three providers. Thirteen are full-time and thirty part-time PRN. And over the last two years, we've had a seventy-four percent retention rating. That includes the anesthesiologist, emergency medicine physicians, hospice, general surgeons, OB-GYNs, orthopedic surgeons, primary care, residency faculty. And we'll talk a little bit more about residency program. And then some of these are direct contracts that provide call coverage because again, we're open 24/7, 365. We don't close hurricanes, doesn't matter, we're open.
I'm going to add where I shouldn't, but because it's his focus, not mine. An important part of our business model at Sampson Regional is for our emergency medicine, anesthesia medicine, hospital services, many hospitals contract the physician services out. So they use Godwin Emergency Providers or whoever to provide their emergency room physicians. All of our physicians are our physicians. They're not contracted through a third party. Our board approved that several years ago in an effort to improve the quality of the services being provided by Sampson Regional.
It's a whole different level when we get to hire them and manage them as opposed to paying a third party to manage them that is in our community. All right, so these are the areas, six primary care providers, eleven surgeons, six hospital medicine, fourteen ER providers, that's eight, eight physicians and six mid-levels. And I have two physicians that are not in this number that have verbally accepted but have not signed their contracts to join us. Six specialty care providers in anesthesia, OB-GYN, and ortho. And then not in this number, over the summer you might have seen that we started, we added dialysis. We have four nephrologists that manage our dialysis program, but they rarely step foot on our grounds. It's all done through telemetry. So we have that service added as well. Next slide. Fifty-three percent of our physicians have a primary or secondary residency in Sampson County. So everyone would love to have that a hundred percent? So if you made it a hundred percent, forty-seven percent of the doctors would be gone because just like your employees, they can get jobs anywhere. And so we're very fortunate in that our physicians are here, are quality, and they choose to be here. So with that, they could go anywhere. So we have twenty-two resident physicians that are part of our hospital and have been for ten years now. So ten years ago, we worked with Campbell University and started our residency program. So we have a dermatology program, so we trained, I told you, six dermatology residents. We are one of four programs in the state. So we have a transition year program and a family medicine program. And if I told you we lose two hundred thousand dollars each year on those programs, you'd say, well, that doesn't make any sense. We're a not-for-profit organization. This has been the trees and the crops that we have grown for the last ten years that is now paying dividends because we are, we are training physicians locally. Less than two percent of residency programs are rural. We're one of them. Statistically, most physicians practice within about fifty miles of where they finish their, their training. So for us, since we've started our residency program, we have hired ten primary care doctors for our community, which is huge. I have two more at this point that are coming to talk to me about jobs. Last year I had the best situation ever where I'm a doctor that wanted to work for me and I didn't have a job. That's a great position to be in. So it's one that we just couldn't come to terms, they didn't want to work the jobs I did have. But that's a good position for us to be, because as we end, as we come to the end of this decade, we will see the largest physician shortage that anyone's ever seen. And so this has been a huge, huge investment for us, but it's very much working for us and the community. Next slide, Jerry. All right. So the top part's probably not as valid for, or is important for you guys. Jerry kind of summarized about us directly contracting with the physician as opposed to paying a random agency to find somebody. Because if I'm going to, if I'm going to rent Jerry to you, I'm going to make fifty to a hundred dollars an hour off of whatever Jerry does. And I don't really care how good Jerry is, as long as you're going to give me the fifty to a hundred dollars more an hour. And so us doing direct contracts, we're able to control the quality and it's made a big difference for us. So million dollar question is, what type of doctors do you guys want? So the hardest part about it is some of the doctors on this screen that we're recruiting for, there's only a couple in Raleigh, a couple in large cities. So the ones that we're actively looking for, emergency medicine, we're looking for a family medicine faculty. So we, Dr. Farrell, who left us for a promotion to go from our associate program director to a program director elsewhere, we knew that would happen one day, but it's a good thing for him, but we're looking for his replacement. We're looking for OB-GYN. We're recruiting for additional orthopedics, neurology, psychiatry, and rheumatology. So that's our recruiting and our efforts, and I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Do we have any psychiatrists in Sampson County?
We do not. We have some psychologists that come in and we're actively trying to recruit. And here's one thing that's a little bit different when it comes to healthcare. So if somebody gave Jerry three billion dollars, we just had so much money that we wouldn't even know what to do with it. At the end of the day, I can only ever legally pay a physician what fair market value is. I can't pay them more, I can't pay them less by violating start laws, anti-kickback laws. So trying to get physicians anywhere, and you've seen this with the state, the physicians have to want to practice where, where, where you're hiring. Because at the end of the day, they can make the same money anywhere because you can't, I can't, I can't say, well, Jerry's the best executive ever, I'm going to pay him a zillion dollars. I can do that technically. He's not a physician. The moment he becomes a physician caring for patients, now I'm interfering and violating start law. Because if I'm not paying, if I'm paying over fair market value, the assumption is I'm doing something illegal for a reason. So that makes it very much challenging to find psychiatrists and neurologists and rheumatologists.
Now you all know why I'm not a doctor, because I can't, I can't, wouldn't make a zillion dollars. So big question, I'm going to talk a little bit, and I apologize for board members that were here for the budget presentation, some of this will be repeat for you guys, but big question is, how do hospitals stay afloat? Healthcare is a tough industry, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. But we've had to make tough decisions. We're a rural community hospital. When I started here twenty years ago, we had on our second floor, many still remember the community, still nursing unit. We were losing in excess of a million dollars a year just from that thirty beds go nursing unit. We had to make the tough choice. We partnered with a local nursing home facility, or two of them actually, to transition our patients to their facilities or to wherever the families wanted their family members to go, because it just was not a cost-effective operation for a hospital to operate. Most nursing homes have many more beds than thirty, it's just cost prohibitive. During COVID, we had a home health agency. Business was tough during COVID for a lot of organizations. We had one therapist on staff that was our hospital employee, one RN on staff that was a hospital employee, and all of our other technical staff were contract. Contract staff, we were paying ballpark, a hundred and fifty dollars an hour for per visit from Medicare, which pays more than Medicaid, was about a hundred bucks a visit. So for every visit we made, we were losing fifty dollars. And just came to the point where we needed to focus the clinical staff back at the hospital side where we were already short-staffed and make that tough decision. We made sure and our board was adamant that every patient was placed in a secure other facility for services before we closed either of those two services down. So in both cases, we make sure that those services are covered. We've added services. Dr. Howerton talked about residency. Thank you to the county, we were able to open a practice up in Spivey's Corner. You guys supported that. We now have a provider in the northwest side of the county that we did not have before as part of this county's operations. We have two general surgeons that are hospital-employed payroll. We have the residency program, which is a starter program that yields us benefits down the road. So we have, and we, just as Dr. Howerton said a few minutes ago, dialysis. Previously, if a dialysis needs patient came to EMS, EMS was taking them to Goldsboro for their services because the service was not available in Sampson County. We now provide that service within Sampson County. So we do pick and choose what we're doing carefully to help us stay afloat. We do rely very strongly on our staff to do everything right, to bill and collect for the services we provide. We make sure our documentation is accurate. We have third-party auditors come in, independent, come in and verify that what I provide is what I'm charging for, is what I'm billing for, to make sure we're doing the right thing. Tough one. We actively manage staff to volume. That is something that many hospitals can decide of. We are good at it. I won't say we're the best, but we have months where our board members, we said, we didn't manage our staff this month the way we needed to. Volumes were down. We had some snow days. We sent people home, we closed the practice. If volumes are not going to be there, we can't afford to have people working and not doing anything. So we're very actively managing our staff to volumes. We use a group person organization, it's called Health Trust is the one we use, there's several out there, that has been instrumental in helping us save costs on supplies. There's a catch to it. I have to do ninety percent of my buy-through them to stay in their contract. But they have so many hospitals that participate, they're able to drive the cost down significantly. And that has saved Sampson Regional a ton of money on hospital expenses and capital expenses for almost any capital expense we buy on our facility-related expense, for any clinical equipment. I'll send them our contract, and they'll tell me it's a good contract, it's a bad contract, try this vendor instead, very, very resourceful to help us keep our costs in line. We do not receive any funding from any outside sources. The only funding, as I said, from the county would be the BSEP program, if any. We are independent, independent for the services we provide, we bill for and we collect for to keep the hospital open. For the hospital, looking at overall performance, many of the hospitals around the country are still struggling from an operational perspective. That has not changed since before COVID. The volumes since COVID have never rebounded. We're still not seeing the number of patients in the emergency room or other services that we saw prior to COVID. Those volumes still have not come back. Costs continue to rise. We talk about costs, I know the county has cost issues. Our hospital costs from 2023 to 2024 increased seven percent. Majority of that is in salaries and benefits. Benefits are very expensive for everybody. As I said a little while ago, insurers continue to reduce reimbursement and/or push to reduce inpatient utilization. You're no longer an inpatient, you're really an observation patient, and that affects what, how much they're paying the hospital for the services. And that affects what, how much they're paying the hospital for the services we provide. The only good news in 2024 from a cash perspective, bond market was good, T-bill rates were good, and we have better investment performance than we've had in the past several years. And that's about as predictable now as the weather in Sampson County. From a volume perspective in '24, inpatient volumes stabilized. We saw more admissions for the emergency department and we added nephrology services. So we were able to capture admissions we had not had previously. Our ER volumes, admissions exceeded what we budgeted, but our emergency room volumes themselves were under what we expected. Dr. Howardton likes to attest, know how many emergency patients we see a year?
All of them.
We see them all, that's a very good answer. That's a very politically correct answer, I would say. 30,000 emergency patients a year. 30,000 emergency patients. Why is that? That's real. My first hospital was a same-sized hospital in Bradford, Pennsylvania, we saw about 16,000. Part of the issue, access to primary care. Where do people go for anything? A runny nose, whatever it is, they come to the emergency room. It's just very challenging. Outpatient volume has varied, lab and rehab were under budget. Some imaging has improved, that's been back and forth. And we do have several practices, I was looking at the numbers before and I'm gonna screw it up. I think we have 10 physician practices that we have. We have surgery, OB, orthopedic. I think six of the, six out of 10 are primary care practices, which we've added in the community to try to capture, as Dr. Howard said, the ability for patients to have care done locally in Sampson County. Our admissions, patients that are admitted to the hospital, 2,500 patients get admitted a year. Our average length of stay is about four days. We had 9,700 patients in beds, in, in patients' beds during the year, 9,700 patient days. Our emergency room visits, just under 30,000 2024, we were just over 30,000 2023. Surgery cases, surgery volumes did increase last year. We did more endoscopy cases last year than 35. We did 4,000 surgeries in Sampson County. We had about 8,800 CT scans. We have a CT scanner dentistry at the outpatient diagnostic center for convenience for our patients and one in the hospital emergency room. We did 2,200 MRIs at our facility last year. And a relative value unit is every 15 minutes of service. Physical therapy provided 27,000 value units of service last year at Sampson Regional Medical Center, outpatient rehab center, which is on the corner of Johnson and Beaman. Our physician practices saw 31,000 visits last year. So if you take the physician practice visits plus the emergency room visits, we saw over 60,000 practice patients, if you will, provider patients. So that service for the county, for a county of 60,000 is a very relative number for the services we provide in Sampson County. What questions do you have that we can answer for you guys?
Since COVID, there was private nurses coming in, right? How is that calculated now, to, to COVID to now?
We had private duty nursing in home health services only. We don't have any private duty nurses coming into the hospital, does it?
We've not had, we've not had contracts for about three years. Are you talking about nurses, nurses that are coming in as contract?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm thinking, contract nurses.
Three years now, two, definitely two years with no contract nursing. So again, there's ties with the community college and then recruiting. And then as Jerry said, we're, from a nursing perspective, we're paying more than what the triangle is because that's what it requires to take care of the patients.
We're, for clinical nurses, right now, we're in a good position. From imaging, right now is where everybody's struggling, trying to find CT techs, ultrasound techs, is extremely difficult. It is very challenging across the country right now.
If, if I may, what strategies are you looking at to divert potential patients from going to the ER and diverting them to other areas of care, which would help?
So, well, I, I'll...
I just point to...
Yes, so from a, if we put a sign in front of the ER that said, "Don't Rom," that would be a violation of federal law. So the biggest thing that, if you go back to, I think 10 years ago, we had close to 35,000 ER visits, is access to primary care. So having, having added all the primary care offices that we have and growing that is probably the biggest strength in helping people not have to depend on the ER. It's, it's more expensive for them, it's more expensive for us. It's a different level of care. Most of us have probably gone and seen our family doctor for a headache and we didn't get a head CT. If, I don't know the exact statistics, I don't fly airplanes, but I think it's 99.999% of airplanes took off and landed safely. You'd have 10 airplane crashes a day. That's not good enough. Same thing with ER. You come in, you can come in, see your family doctor, have a headache, get treated, and then come back if it's not better. You can't come to the ER, have a headache, and it be a brain bleed that was so subtle. So 99.999 is not good enough for the ER either. So just by the nature of where you're getting that care, the standard changes. And that's why you see the costs go up as well because you're gonna CT that in this different setting might not happen.
Something else important to know and it's challenging to manage, but we follow the same financial assistance guidelines for all of our practices that we do in hospital. So if, for instance, you qualify for financial assistance and you're gonna have surgery and you, our surgeons are doing the service for you, their bill will see the same discount that the hospital bill does. Same thing with yours pedi practice. So we share based on our payers. If we know someone qualifies for charity care or financial assistance, we provide that across the spectrum, the spectrum of services. Why? Because rather than having to get the service, it's the right thing for the community.
I think the other part, and I don't know if I clarified this, having urgent care and having hours after 5:00 are helpful. It's also helpful that there's urgent cares in the community that are not associated with the hospital but are available to provide that care. And so it gives that opportunity for people to self-select on that headache that is their sinus aesthetic that they've had 100 times, to not have to go to the ER. So even though that's not owned by Sampson Regional, we have ours and there's, there's others in the community, it's, it's a good thing for the whole community. And it's taking away business from our ER, business that we would rather have here for in the right location. Very good question.
Do you, why you don't, or do you, I don't know whether you do or not, like if a patient was being released from the hospital, do you dispense medications for them until they can get to their drugstore?
I think the answer is one day, one night.
So, so I can answer this. In certain circumstances, in certain circumstances, we do. So if, if it's overnight, especially since we don't have any 24-hour pharmacies, there's times that they'll give a doc circle or two, the, and even that gets a little bit, it's not as simple as me as a doctor giving you two pills. There are certain circumstances that we're allowed to. We're not a dispensing pharmacy. So as, to be a good steward to the community as a not-for-profit, we have quite a few mom-and-pop style pharmacies in the community. We don't want to be in a position to compete with them. So we don't, we're not a dispensing pharmacy.
Not a licensed outpatient pharmacy.
So we don't, we don't have an outpatient pharmacy license to dispense. And we have very specific circumstances that we can do very limited. So I would say, if you're at 2:00 in the morning and you need one medicine at 6:00, then you're probably leaving with it, depending on the medicine. If you're at 2:00 in the afternoon, then the answer would be none. No questions?
You good? Any more questions, Rayburn? Gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
I think I did see some things that I would hope that you would share with our community and they can see just how valuable our hospital is to this community and what we do. There's some numbers that we get to see that I don't know if everyone does, that I think that, I think it would be instrumental for you guys to make sure that they knew what is going on in our community. And I do thank you for what you did at Spivey's Corner, because that has been a very big positive for our community on our end of the count. Thank you all. We'll see you then.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for letting us present information to you and go forward through the year. A lot of these topics are complex. I mentioned to Commissioner Godwin in the hallway, if there was any question as to who designed the Department of Social Services, it was the government. The designing array of programs was, was really something. And also I do appreciate the hospital for you guys. Thank you for coming and voluntarily presenting a lot of information today.
Thank you for all that you guys do.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for letting us present information, that's all I have.
I think it's very good.
All right, now I will entertain a motion.
You got a motion? I got a motion.
I'll see.
You got a say. I would do the favor, entertain, we are so adjourned. Enjoy your night.